Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for the Westerville City Schools Board of Education meeting. We have already been in executive session for the purposes of negotiations, so we've already taken the role, but we would like to welcome Mr. Hersheiser at the table since Dr. Kellogg is on vacation. There will be two opportunities tonight for you to address the board. The first one needs to pertain to action items on the agenda and the second does not. There are signup sheets in the back and you will have five minutes to speak. So with that, will you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Up first, district highlights and recognitions, we do not have any. 5.01, discussion and approval of the minutes of the meeting, June 8th and June 19th, 2015. Do we have any questions, comments? Bart, please consider them approved. We do not have any reports, which takes us to public comments, 7.01. Do we have any? Sorry. No, we do not have any public comments. Moving on to financial, 8.01, resolution to approve the financial reports and investments as of May 2015. The financial report lists all funds ending May 2015. May I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Griffith, would you like to speak with us?
Sure. Madam President, members of the board, this is for May 2015. Year-to-date receipts for the general fund only is 155,463,000. Year-to-date expenditures for the general fund only are 132,834,000. We have an unencumbered balance of 60,330,000 for all funds year-to-date. We have year-to-date receipts of 187,609,000. Year-to-date expenditures, 187,668. An unencumbered fund balance of $71,482,000. That's finance report.
Any questions, comments? Mr. Griffith?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
8.02, resolution to approve the transfer of funds from the general fund to the uniform school supplies. Bart, would you like to speak? Oh, I want a motion first.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Bart?
Sure. Madam President, members of the board, this is just really a true-up of what we did this last fall. In this district, if you're, most districts in the state, if you have free and reduced lunches, you don't pay fees. And what we do as a general fund is we transfer money from the general fund into the 009 school, uniform school account. We need to put an additional $9,521 in there from what we did last fall, just to true this up. So that's all this motion is.
Okay. Anyone? Bart?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 8.03, a motion to approve financial appropriations for fiscal year 2015 as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Griffith?
Okay. Madam President, members of the board, this is the statutory, we have to do what's called a final appropriations for the school year we're ending in, which is 2015. And at the end of this presentation, you'll see where we have to do the final slash temporary appropriations for next fiscal year. We have to do that statutorily so that we can spend money as of July 1. But for the first presentation, this is just for school year 2014-15. And if I can get this to work. All right. Basis, basically, see, the basis of the presentation is current amended final appropriations are for this period, July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. As I said, the next part will be for the next school year. Reporting entity is just Westerville City Schools. We do not participate with Westerville Library or Westerville City. We are our own entity. Sometimes you might say, well, you do have to pass the, if the library puts a levy on, that is true. They do have to pass a, put a levy on through us if they want to put a levy on for the library, but that's the only way we participate with them. If you've seen this presentation before, you'll notice I try to use a lot of the same stuff so that you get familiar with what everything looks like and how it works. This is just a sheet that shows every fund that we deal with. Now, keep in mind, this one page represents about 20 pages of funds, but this is broken down into one. You can see the different numbers of funds we have, and I've tried to explain those on in the back. But we have anywhere from general fund to public school support, mentor programs, straight A grants, Perkins Grants, federal grants, there's a lot of grants. You can see we have bond retirement, permanent improvement. This just lists all the type of funds that we have, that we deal with as a board of education. Okay. Final appropriations measure, this is basically, again, this is the final amended appropriations. We do these at the fund level, so if you say, well, you know, what's the fund level? Well, it's the most level, the general fund. In other words, I just gave you a report tonight, was a hundred, year-to-date receipts 155 million. That's the fund level. You know, it's not the function object or function level or object level, it's this, these are at the function, excuse me, fund level. And basically, as this says, we have to do this by October 1st of each year. So we typically do them now so that we can spend money in July. We'll bring these back to you again in September to do the finals for next fiscal year. What I gave you also in here are object codes, because you'll see some of my reports to say, well, if we were to talk about personal services, what are personal services? I've tried to give you the definitions that come right out of the Uniform School Accounting System Handbook that the state provides. It tells you 100s are personal services, 200s are retirements. There are no 300s in the system. If you hear me talk about purchase services, those are 400s. 500s are supplies, materials, 600s are capital outlay. We do not use 700s. 800s are other objects. 900s are other use of funds. So that's the, sort of, the object codes when we talk about the objects. It's sort of the next breakout other than the funds. So if you say, what's the salaries cost you? We can say, well, it's on the 100s. So it's an easier way to break things out. What I tried to give you here was a breakout of those funds. Salaries, the 100 salaries, this year as an expense, we spent 82,898,000. Benefits was 28,491. And I won't read all this through to you, but the total we spent was 145,262 is the total expenditures for the general fund. And then I gave you a breakout in the graph. You can kind of see the salaries are down here in the blue, just graphically how much those are. It's roughly 57% of our expenditures for the general fund. Benefits are 20% of the general fund. And I will share with you, up here under the 800s, we do purchase our substitutes from the Franklin County ESC. So about 6 million of that number is also for substitute teachers that we pay for substitutes. Okay, so they're just technically not in salaries and fringes. This is graphically, and I know the audience can't see the numbers, but you can see graphically. For instance, this first graph right here is fiscal year 15, or fiscal, fiscal year 11, then it goes 12, 13, 14, 15, and it projected 16. So you can see how we've been on a downward trend technically until fiscal year 14, and then as things start going back up. And then the bottom graph basically just groups all of the object codes. So like, here's all the 100s together, the 200s together, and so forth. There's the 100s and there's the 200s. We just graphically did them so you could see visually what those look like fiscal year 11 through fiscal year 16. 16 is just an estimate. It's basically based on what the five-year forecast was, was the number we took that from. I tried to give you some, you know, I told you we had fund, we have object, we also have functions. And so I tried to give you by function code because, well, what do you spend for regular instruction? Well, we spent $80 million. That's this first number here. And I tried to tie it yellow, so as you see the, on the columns on the right for the audience, and you guys here, you can see yellow, yellow, and then you can see special ed, takes up these two. So I tried to give you color, coordinate, show you which items are in which function as well, to see what we spend for regular instruction, special ed, support services and on. So as functions go, we spent 159,000, 179,000 as a function, and then regular instruction was, next it was 159, 179. Okay. Westerville City Schools expenses by function, again, I just did it graphically so you can see how much we spent and how much we, percentage that goes with each category. This was just another comparison, is if you wanted to see each function by the next, by the last four years and the next two years, graphically you can see what those numbers are. I won't go through them in detail, but they're part of this presentation as well. You can see that our total expenditures in fiscal year 11 was 147,805. In fiscal year 15, it's 145,262. So we're actually two, little, almost 2 million less this year than we were in 2011. All right. This is actually the report and page that I need you to approve. This is the fiscal year 2015. This actually has, for you guys out there, this column here tells you what was appropriated last September. This tells you what we've appropriated now, and this tells you the difference. So here's the, here's what we appropriated last September, here's what we appropriated now, and the difference. So for the general fund, we actually are appropriating 145,524,000. It's actually 4.7 million less than what we appropriated in September. Some of those just, was just because we had, we tried to put some anticipated costs in there. Again, we put in extra for electric, we put in extra for different things, and so we try to plan for any contingencies that may happen. So that's why you see a larger number. We still came in $4.7 million less, which 145, I think, is tied to the five-year forecast as well. The rest of the funds are listed by fund. You'll see 018, with 019, 300s, you'll see every fund that we have listed with the totals and the increases. This is actually the final appropriations for fiscal year 2015, the current year we're in. This is what you'll be approving. This is actually the language, excuse me, this is the language that you're going to approve, the total, total funding for the district. I know I gave you a lot on general fund, but the final appropriations are for the district as a whole, and the total is 206,705,584. And that's actually the resolution that you need to approve. So, if we can see my fireworks, did you like that? Another year ending, fiscal year 2015 as today, technically it hasn't ended yet, but for fiscal year purposes, it pretty much has. So the next part will be the next resolution. So if we can call the roll for this first part.
Any questions or comments?
Just as opposed to last year, I actually understood everything you said this time.
Good.
Okay.
Okay. Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Another resolution.
8.04, a motion to approve temporary appropriations for fiscal year 2016 as presented. May I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay.
Madam President, members of the board, this is sort of the second part, and this one's really simple. By law, in order for us to spend any dollars beginning July 1st, we have to have temporary appropriations. In some years, you've seen us do final appropriations as well, in other words, we've set them going forward. This year, but mainly because of the state budget hasn't been set and there's too much uncertainty, we're doing temporaries. So this is considered a temporary appropriation. What we did is we took 75% of last year's expenditure, this fiscal year's expenditures as a starting point for next year, and we used that number. So when you see the number up here, and it's going to be hard for you to see, it's 111 million dollars. That's a starting number for us going forward. When we come back to you in September, it could be, you know, 150 million or 100, whatever it's going to be. But this is the, for the general fund, the 111 is 75% of the prior year. All the other ones, the federal funds, 300 funds, state funds, we tried to get those with the information that we have now that's pretty accurate. So they will change, but not by a whole lot. So we look, we know what the federal grants have already approved us for next year, the state grants, some of the athletics, the 300s, different accounts, the 018s, those are, we try to get those as close for next year as we can. But there will be some tweaks when we come back to you in September. But these are considered the temporary appropriations, and this is the resolution you're going to approve. Those temporary appropriations total 166,533,800, and that's the resolution I need approved going forward for next fiscal year.
Okay.
I was waiting for that.
So it's okay?
You may come back to us in September with a change.
I will.
Obviously, you will.
Yeah, I definitely will be back in September with a, with a change, once we have everything finalized.
And by then, we hope to have the state budget.
Yes, I think they're voting on it tomorrow, I believe. So yeah, this, this allows us to make expenditures beginning July 1.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Call roll.
Yep, yes, please.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes, thank you. Personnel consent agenda, 9.01 through 9.13. Who's going to speak with us about that?
I was just looking to see if Lori had made it.
Okay.
So she has not. I'll go through the-
Can I get a motion first?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Sorry.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Tonight's consent agenda has several items. We do have two bus drivers that are retiring. We have several resignations, a few leaves of absences, some changes of assignment with both classified and licensed. There are some contractual status changes. You'll find under one-time payments, local 138, team coach support, where we have individuals paid $600 for their work. This is something that we've had contractually since 2009. The all-day kindergarten training that you see, if you recall, about a month ago, we came to the board and said we weren't sure who the individuals were going to be, but we wanted to do that ahead instead of after. We now know who the individuals are, so those individuals are listed. There's some additional training. You'll find on the secondary science resources, that did come to the board, and after that action, two individuals were reassigned into that area and needed to be included in that training. But those were, had been brought to the board prior to that, those are just some changes to that. In terms of employment, we have some, six, six classified staff. We have 43 teachers on this agenda. At this point, for next week's board agenda, we are looking at at least 20 more that we're hoping to be able to get processed and through by next, by next week. This does make 73 teachers that we've hired so far this year. And we do also have two administrators that are on this agenda that I believe are present. We have Shelley Beard, if you want to stand, and also Jennifer Winters.
Welcome.
So that is tonight's consent agenda.
I have a question, there are 9.12. And, you know, I'm thinking, maybe I figured this out, but we have a couple or three substitute bus drivers that we've hired effective June 16th, and then we have a substitute cafeteria recess aide that we hired in May. Why did we need to hire them as substitutes back before the board approved them?
Well, I know that we have one, well, you're not asking about the one, there was a wrong start date on the one. I know we had one individual that we had brought forward. There was a funeral on the day she was supposed to come, so we had to change the day. As far as the, the bus drivers for June 16th, that would have had to been something to do with our summer school transportation.
Yeah, there's bus drivers. It would have had what?
Had to have something to do with our summer school transportation, and I don't, I'll have to check on the specific answer for that. I don't, I don't know.
We provide summer school transportation. And so we needed substitutes to do that.
Correct.
We couldn't use our, that, I mean, I'm sure we're not using all of our bus drivers for subs, for summer school.
Well, but it's beyond their regular contract year. So it's a separate contract that they're signed up for. Correct.
Correct. It ended at the end of the school year on the 23rd.
Still, I would like to know more about that. I don't understand that one.
Any other questions, concerns?
No, I have one statement I guess I would like to make in public that, so I look at, you know, or have been all year, at resignations and retirements, and then I look at what, who, who we are hiring, and on the record, it concerns me when I look down here, and I think I counted between around 17 BA zeros. Just my thought, I would like to see a little more balance there, and maybe there, there is and I'm missing it. But it, it's a little concerning to me, so many, not a lot of experience, I'd like to see a little bit more of a balance. And, and I'm going to put my other board members on the spot and ask them to kind of weigh in and see what they feel.
I noticed we had some MAs this time, actually, masters.
We did, yeah.
So I felt good about that, you know, I think we're balancing it more and more.
17 to-
I've said in the past, and I haven't changed my mind at all, that I want us to do a better job of balancing, because during the last disastrous downturn, we went way far toward inexperienced hires. And that carries issues with it. On the one hand, you get really excited, new people who want to be there, they're excited about being there, they can't wait to get their, their feet in the district. But on the other hand, it takes time to develop the level of expertise that's necessary to teach at the level of instruction consistently that we expect and require. So what we have to do as a district is balance new hires and experienced hires, and balance the placement of new hires with experienced existing staff, so that we get that balance, so we get the energy and the wonder and the new ideas that come with new hires, and we get the importance of experience. And there's plenty of research out there to talk about the importance of experienced levels. So I am totally with you on that. I'm also concerned at 17, being at the entry level. But what I would ask, Mark, if you would ask Lori when she, when she gets back from her trip, if she could prepare for us information to let us know, as we look at this group of 73, what are we looking at as regards level of experience? But also if it's not overly onerous for her to provide this information, you know, graphically or however she wants to provide it, how those teachers, how experience levels are laid out across the buildings?
Yes, because when you look on here, Hawthorne has-
Yeah.
-six or eight of them.
Yeah.
And I want to know, where, where did those teachers go? I can see some of them have moved, transferred, but yeah, that concerns me.
One of the good things is we have a very, very strong program for our entering teachers.
For the mentoring, yeah.
But they, they need that program, and they need mentoring by experienced teachers, and they need to be within an environment where there is experience and understanding.
I think our oversight role is to make sure that we bring in the best teachers we can, and I think that too heavy a reliance, perhaps from a past experience, too heavy a reliance on BA zero, or something close to that, can be, can be not as effective as we'd like. I'd like to see us do a stronger balance across the board. And I do want to do a quick shout-out as well to the support that we give, new teachers trying to, to help them feel not only welcomed, but encouraged in their role, and, and the new administrators that we have here coming in and excited and ready to jump in, I know, with, with both feet. But I, I have a bit of a concern that when I see the scales tip a little farther than I think they should in the level of inexperience. And for those, anybody that may be watching this, because this is some scintillating TV that goes out there every week, we are not at all diminishing the passion and the strength and the enthusiasm that new teachers may come in. We are not, none of us are doing that. It's just our role to be oversight and to make sure that our students are provided with the best opportunity that we can give to them. And when there's too much inexperience, we know, we know that that can be unhelpful for the students, for the classroom, and for the teachers themselves, because they need to lean on and into each other, and that requires experience.
May I guess I would say, I mean, to echo Rick's comments, I'm, I'm very certain that regardless of the level of teachers in terms of their experience that we're hiring, we're hiring high-quality teachers, right? We're getting, and I know from some of the conversations I've been having with, with new teachers, we're getting great teachers in general, you know, joining the district. I think that, I would, you know, concur that, you know, if the board is collectively feeling that we may have imbalance issues related to experience, and we're seeing, you know, 50, 60, 70%, because we have a point in time right here, I agree, Nancy, we need to see it across the broader spectrum of the 73. I think that there's probably a directional percentage that would feel, make us feel more comfortable, of X percentage of more experienced teachers and X percentage of new teachers. But we need to come to an agreement, kind of as a board, what those guidelines look like, or guideposts, and then, and then I think that's our obligation to talk about this strategically with Lori and with Dr. Kellogg. But if we're all feeling a little, excuse the term, itchy and scratchy, that the percentages may not be where we'd like them to be, I think we should be discussing it, for sure. Yeah.
Maybe I'm the only board member that doesn't feel the itchy-scratchy, because I think Lori's doing a great job in selecting-
Oh, absolutely.
And I do not believe that, that beginning teachers are something that, you know, they're the eager go-getters, they're the ones that, and I don't think we're overly burdened heavily with that number, because we have a lot of existing experienced teachers here to teach and to work with these beginners, that are eager to, and you know what, those first 10 years are sometimes the best. So I am one person on this board that is not concerned at all with who we selected. And as I said, there are some experienced ones we're approving tonight. I believe I saw at least one master's teacher on there, and, and, you know, you can't go by the number of degrees or years of experience and who's going to make the best teacher. So I, I think that Lori's doing a great job to attempt to select that best person, and so I feel good about that, so.
Well, I guess the only thing I'd, I'd say, Dr. French, is that just from a pure fiscal management standpoint, my concern is not even so much the level of experience or capability or talent that we're hiring. My concern is, is that, you know, we're sticking aboard 20 years from now with a substantial load of experienced and seasoned teachers, you know, that represent a larger percentage of the overall spend for the district, because we're not creating some type of well-planned statistical distribution of people that come in at the MA level and may leave, you know, 10 or 15 years from now, as opposed to a very, very large group coming in 25 years from now for retirement. You know, so I think that that's got to be part of the longer-term fiscal plan as well.
Yeah, and sometimes that'll take care of itself in a district this large. People are going to come and go, so that, that's not a concern that I have.
And, and I would like to say, I very much believe in Lori and everything she's doing. I am not saying that.
Oh, no.
It's just my job, as I sit up here and something concerns me, and to be able to talk about it in public and, and check your pulse and see how you're feeling, and it, you know, when I see several going to one school, and a school that probably is a little bit needier, absolutely, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand up and say something, so.
It will help to have a look overall, to see how, how we look as a district, you know, just, not just the 73, but overall, because just as I think it's important to have that balance in the hires, it's important to have the balance across the district and across each building. And also, you know, we're talking 73 hires just in the class, or the licensed staff.
Yes.
That's amazing work. It will help to have a look overall, to see how, how we look as a district, you know, just, not just the 73, but overall, because just as I think it's important to have that balance in the hires, it's important to have the balance across the district and across each building. And also, you know, we're talking 73 hires just in the class, or the licensed staff.
Yes.
That's amazing work, and this district has moved farther, faster in getting that done this year than we've done in many, many years, so kudos to all involved in that.
Mm-hmm. And, and those teachers chose us, so it's, that's saying something.
Why would they not?
Of course. Okay. Bart, sorry.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Policy consent, 10.01, the final reading on policy 2271, post-secondary enrollment programs. May I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Do we have anything we want to add to this or discuss? Are we all? Okay. Mr. Griffith?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Recommended action, new business, 12.01, first reading board policy for 8400, school safety, and Mrs. Meister is going to talk to us. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Mr. Hershizer and Mr. Griffith. Policy 8400, school safety, is being recommended for revision as a result of requirements contained in House Bill 178 and new regulations issued from the Ohio Department of Education. Our school safety plan is now called an emergency management plan. Our district safety committee oversees the process of developing the emergency management plan. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I guess the first question I would have is, as with anything that's brought down to the district level as a result of state mandates, have the changes equated into any additional operational consequences or costs to the district that we'll need to account for as a part of the changes in state law?
I am not thinking of anything in this particular case that would be an unfunded mandate.
All right.
We did quite a bit of that last year, didn't we, with the buildings and the, the bells and the whistles and everything, so, or the last couple of years? So, we did spend a lot back.
This is one of those things that I know, you know, we, we read it and vote on it and feel that it's, that it's important. I, I really thank you and just the teams around us that do this kind of work. This, every once in a while, we need to pause and just like, this is all about safety and significant emergencies that could happen in our schools, that could happen around our children, and this is not something to just blow off as inconsequential. So, I know I'm preaching to the choir.
I appreciate your comments so much, and please do know that Westville Schools enjoys a very strong relationship with our safety services partners. In fact, our chief of police will tell you that it's our safety manual that was the template for going forward and, and work that was done.
Wow, thank you.
Mr. Griffith?
It's first reading.
I am so sorry. I don't know what I'm thinking.
You're on vacation.
I'm on donations. I am done. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Tracy.
I'm seeing if you're paying attention, Bart. Donations, 13.01 donations. I am so sorry. May I have a motion for this?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, thank yous?
Always thank yous. It's interesting how often, and how appreciated it is as well, but how often we see donations to help students in need, to cover lunch costs, to cover other, other needs that students have, and that is every bit as important as some of the larger donations that come overall.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Okay, 13.02, student handbooks. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Good evening again. I'm here tonight to offer your consideration for recommended revisions for the 2015, 16 student handbooks. A committee of stakeholders have met to review and recommend these revisions. The recommended revisions have been reviewed by legal counsel. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have one suggestion. So, I, I, when I was looking through each of these, when it says refer to guidelines or policy, I think there needs to be a link, since it's online, so it goes directly to there instead of asking people to find it again. I saw there were a couple links at the very end. It should be all linked, in, in my opinion. I think that would be nice.
I do, too.
Consider it done.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Cut somebody off?
What?
I just thanked her.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Okay, 13.03, resolution to approve admissions and waiver of tuition for foreign exchange students. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. So, it looks like there is just one gentleman on here.
Fame.
Mm-hmm. Which we welcome him.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Thank you. Public comments, 14.01, and we have one tonight, Mrs. Louise Reese.
I've been enjoying mine. I wish it would go on two more months. I just want to pop up here to emphasize what Mr. Byrd said about the concern about the aging out of our staff. It seems hard to think that far into the future now, as they're all so young when they start with us. But this, this has happened before, and this is what the situation was when we were looking to cut $15 million from the budget, and it ended up in program cuts. It didn't take care of itself. So, this was a situation we had to deal with. And the other thing I'd like to bring up is, is that you have a number of students in this district that are functioning on a higher level, and the benefits of having a teacher with a master's degree is, is that they have that much more education and tons more reading behind them and experience academically in that subject matter, especially when the master's is in that particular subject matter. And I'm, I'm looking forward to South getting a teacher who's actually getting a master's degree in his field. So, what, what that brings to the classroom is the opportunity for that teacher to share things that somebody who has a four-year degree may not have covered in their four years of college, and it brings a level of experience to that classroom that a lot of students in this district do need and do want and are hungry for, okay? And when you're talking about somebody who's getting ready to leave high school and start college with 30 credit hours to their, to their benefit already, they've already been taking college-level courses. So, to have somebody that has a master's degree is somebody who has just that much more experience that they can lend in the, to the students in the classroom. And so, I, I hear this about balance, and I know what we've experienced as a family in the district, and I think that we do need a balance. I'm more concerned about how the group's going to age out, what that's going to do to us financially down the road, and what, what that means to the budget. But I'm also very, very concerned about the experience within the classroom and the benefits of having a master's degree or a doctorate, and what that can bring to the educational experience for the children. And in this district, we do have a number of children that would seriously benefit from having that level of experience in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Moving on to board comments. Who would like to speak first? No? Bart? Mark? Okay, I guess I don't have anything to say either. Dates, times, and locations of the next meeting, 16.01, the board will meet in regular session Monday, July 6th at 10:00 a.m., and Monday, July 27, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. here at the Early Learning Center. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we are adjourned. Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh, what is wrong with me?
Well, legally, you can do that, but-
Yeah, you can. Roberts rules.
Okay, we're done.
Close the meeting. How about if I put all yeses?
You can beat the box.
Gosh, I swear. You drink the water.[1783.12]